Ready?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Good morning, everyone. I would welcome all of you to this in the San Luis County Board of County Commissioners break your meeting. Today is October 21st, 2025. I'm going to call the meeting to order. Please raise your hand like Commissioner Tony Has, followed by the pleasure of the commission by Commissioner Robert DeSarro.
Heavenly Father, thank you for waking us up to see this again. Please give us this energy and the strength that we need to accomplish all our lives again. Please help us to keep our eyes on you and not on the worries of the world. We commit this day and everything into, into your hands. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioners. I would like to call Mr. Don Camp.
Commissioner Has.
Here.
Commissioner Sir.
Here.
Commissioner Lopez.
Here. And before I move on to the agenda, Mr. Don Camp, do you have any changes to the agenda?
No changes, Commissioner.
Thank you, sir. I will entertain the motion.
I'll move to approve the agenda. Second motion.
Commissioner Has.
Yes.
Commissioner Sir.
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez.
Yes.
Quick little section two, consideration of minutes, the regular meeting minutes of October 7th, 2025. Commissioners, we have those minutes. Are there any comments, additions, additions? Here in that, I will entertain the motion.
Move to approve the reconsidering minutes of October 7th, 2025.
On second line.
Commissioner Sir.
Yes.
Commissioner Has.
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez. Yes. Thank you. Reading of correspondence, Commissioner Committee reports. Commissioner DeSarro, would you like to go first, sir?
Sure. On the 13th, I attended a meeting with Commissioner Has out in the Kim area. I think I'm with him. Give your report on that. Also, on yesterday, I had an OPI meeting, Volter County Partners Incorporated in Mahana. One of the main things we had to do was kind of made some change additions to our bylaws based on a meeting that Ms. Burke had with Department of Local Affairs and stuff like that. So, we just had to add in the bylaws, worrying that a community, it will be, it will be our community-based development organization, and it serves to meet the legal and organizational structure requirements for the Colorado CBP for economic development application. So, and with that, our lending committee for our county, you'll be getting a questionnaire on that. So, they did inform us that we need to have a lower and moderate income person on that loan committee. And they did say that Los Angeles County's loan committee is really active when they do this. It sounds like Volter was real active. Also, the last thing, I don't know if anybody knows, Lori Arnold, our Cx extension office person, received the 2025 Alton Schofield Award in recognition of superior service to the people of Colorado through her extension career. I think she's been here 35 years. So, it was, she was in the paper, but I think she needs to be recognized. She does a lot for this community as far as forage and education programs.
Congratulations to her.
And that's my report.
So, Commissioner DeSarro, what is the amount of Volter Partners Incorporated that the community, what is the maximum amount of loan they can apply for, and what is the total corpus that they carry on their books?
I think right now, we're over, we, on our books, we have over a million dollars. But the loan, loans that are given out depends on, I think, every $10,000, you have to, you have to employ a person in there. We haven't done a whole lot over here lately. I think there's two being prepared that they were in the Longton Ford area. But we just, we did a one for a bowling alley, and they kind of had to, Colorado lab make had to, had to do some loan. And because there was four families involved in it, and they couldn't come up with the, each employee for, you know, for $10,000. So, they kind of had to do some movement around. So, the Colorado may have to lend them a certain amount, and then the Volter Partners Incorporated can lend them a certain amount.
Cool. Thank you. Commissioner Has.
I'll talk about the tour that we have in, in Kim and in that area. Representative Winter had a legislative ranch tour, and he invited several representatives to attend. And we toured the Herald Linnland Ranch. Cecilia Espinoza from House District 64 came, Dretchen Riden from HD 38, Representative Marshall from HD 43, and Representative Jen Bacon, House District 7, and Ty Winters, of course, and then Chris Richardson from HD 56. The topics of concern addressed with the representatives were underserved communities and their landfill requirements, the rewilding efforts of state and federal lands, extreme, we need to show extreme gratitude for these representatives who made the effort to drive four hours and spend the day in HD 47 with our constituents. It was an opportunity to ask a lot of questions, and these urban legislators had a lot of questions when we were talking about, when we were talking about ag and the impacts of grasslands and local governments and how one size doesn't fit all. It was great to have those, those urban legislators there to ask those tough questions. And Representative Riden was in love with asking all kinds of ag questions. And she was embarrassed about it. I told her, there's hope for you. My wife and I have been married 42 years, and she was as green as you are coming into this. There's hope. She says, it's just, it's going to take me 42 years? Well, it took her 42 years. Anyway, so happy that they were able to join us. On the 15th, the state landlord had a meeting to decide the future management of several properties, including private property that's owned in, in the Kim and several different areas. Forty-six thousand acre La Harde Ranch in the San Luis Valley is being impacted. CPW and DNR are partnered with NGOs to permanently protect recreational access and conservation values. Forty million in federal funds from the National Land and Water Conservancy Fund that will be managed by CPW for state wildlife area balanced by, managed by BLM, specifically the Simero and Comanche grasslands, along with the La Harde property. La Harde properties in Canales County is valued at nearly $50 million, and the state landlord has pursued efforts to sell the property since 2017. Federal agencies look to acquire the 43,000 acres for management. Eleven raising leases will be affected, net risk in two private recreational leases. On the 17th, Colorado Department of Human Services and CCI have a joint meeting to discuss the SNAP benefit update. Shelley Baker from, from Colorado DHS was present. She said 614,911 individuals are served for a total cost of $123 million due to the federal shutdown. The SDA has informed the state of Colorado and Los Angeles County Department of Human Services that SNAP benefits for November cannot be issued. And there are several bullet points here. However, you can still use your EBT card to purchase food as long as there is a benefit left on the card. SNAP benefits for November will not be issued for November until additional federal clearance and information. There is no appeal process. And if you've got questions, reach out to your, or you need assistance, reach out to your local food banks and community agencies in the area. On the 18th, I attended a Zoom. This one gentleman was, was interesting. Senator Cynthia Loomis has introduced a bill called the Diesel Truck Liberation Legislation to the Obama administration to repeal the Obama administration and Biden PA wars on the semi trucks. There have been hefty fines and $50,000 levied for deleting the after treatments on the fuel systems. The reason for the deletion in the northern states was to keep fire truck school buses, EMSs, et cetera, running during those extreme cold times, harsh climates. The after system would, would gel up in any school buses and emergency ambulance. It would be stalled out in these very harsh climates where it gets down to forty degrees sometimes with the wind chill and the lives of those on those, on those school buses and EMS transports are responsible for that. And anyway, it looks like it's going to be repealed. And if this goes through, it's finally there's somebody paying attention anyway. And that's my report.
Thank you, sir. And thank you, Commissioners. The legislative roundtable that you both attended, thank you. I was simply, under the weather of worry, I sort of decided that rather stay back. One of the meetings that we had last week, the Eastern Plains Renewable Energy Impact Study. Four council of governments on the eastern plains are working on studying the type of energy that could be brought to the eastern part of, basically southeast all the way up to the Yuma County on the eastern part of the state of Colorado. The, the group got together, and I am on the council of governments, Los Angeles County, one of the RFP evaluators. And this coming Friday, there is going to be the evaluation, basically meeting face to face with the applicants that want to participate on this RFP. The RFP is going to be awarding half a million dollars. That, in a sense, is coming from the Department of Local Affairs. What the scope of work is qualifying and mapping both existing and proposed fully scaled renewable energy, solar, wind, and nuclear projects. The conversation has begun on Representative Winter had introduced legislation that nuclear energy should be considered equally as the rest of any other energy. So, we were able to put that into one of the requirements as we were looking for proponents. Includes an analysis of existing projects as case studies to better illustrate the lasting environment and economic impacts to capture the rates for the region that we're going to be serving. And one of the bigger questions that we're asking, in the event, once we have this study, what's going to happen in order for us to fund a project, award this study? The, we need to be able to measure the production from proposed projects and evaluate contributions to the state energy goals, but also for local communities. You know, one of the things that on this particular book, we didn't want to award and get a study, and then all of a sudden, the energy is going to be going out of state. There is no benefit, in a sense, for any one of the locals. The, also, part of the study is to provide regional and local strategies, how to maximize the lasting positive economic impacts of these projects and initiatives, activate job creation and retention, how is this going to impact in taxes or property taxes, and identify key community development investments. The, and then, of course, what we're looking also as we go through the process is what's going to be coming out of the legislature in 2026. If the study actually yields that we are, this part of the state is primed for nuclear energy, how is the legislature going to react in regulating, and that is the word, regulating any new development of, of energy? So, we will see how this happens. We have, we have four respondents, and it's going to be a big project. There is the table of scheduled activities, and this is going to be in the next six months. The proposed study should be getting through the, through the culmination of it yielding the results. Thereafter, we can go after other runs through the council of governments to provide. The next step is, is there going to be any subsidies, which, at the end of the day, I think those more subsidy could be a thing of the past. But nonetheless, the Eastern Plains Renewable Energy Impact Study is one of the things that I've been working on so hard. We spent a review on the four, the four respondents and huge packets. I mean, it took quite a lot of work to go through each and every one of the areas of evaluation. And so, Commissioners, I am going to, that's going to be the report for today. Once again, thank you for the, how we work together as a team, as Commissioner Tony Has likes to always say, Team Los Angeles County, divide and conquer. So, with that, we're going to go to the next portion of our agenda and elected officials update. Assistant Ramon, would you, would you have any updates for us?
Oh, I always have one or two tidbits of information.
Good morning.
Good morning, Mark. How was everyone? We had our State Board of Equalization meeting last Friday, and so we were able to determine, the state was finally able to determine what our assessment rates are going to be on this year's tax bills and what assessment rates I have to apply and all assessors have to apply across the state. We've been waiting for these two numbers because this will be the first year in all Colorado history that we have decoupled assessment rates for schools and non-schools, so schools and all other taxing entities. When the law was created in special session last year in July, the governor's office was anticipating that we would see growth in the state of Colorado above 5%. And that 5% benchmark would determine what those assessment rates did, whether they went up or whether they went down. If we were above 5% growth, then we would see the school assessment rate for residential properties decrease. Numbers are in, the State Board of Equalization approved last Friday, that non-school assessment rate for residential homes will be at 6.25 for all entities that are non-schools. The school assessment rate will be 7.05. Our state growth was 4.3%. That's the first time I've ever seen the governor on a State Board of Equalization meeting, and it'll probably be the last time I see the governor on a State Board of Equalization meeting. I think he was very interested to see what the numbers were, and I can tell you, his assessors last year during the special session kept telling them, we are not anticipating that amount of growth. I'm glad to see that our words of wisdom rang true. It's always nice when the data shows that you were correct in your preliminary forecasting. So, we will be seeing schools, you will pay more to school districts on your house taxes this year than you would have ever before. So, we will see what happens. Myself and the treasurer, and I can tell you, all assessors and all treasurers across all 64 counties, we've been having some heated discussions and long discussions and debates because there is also going to be some changes coming to the tax bill. Last year, there was some legislation passed that treasurers are no longer allowed to print the assessed valuation on your tax bill. The law states shall not. So, there is no wiggle room in there for treasurers to even go around. So, for the previous 60 to 80 years, we've been putting assessment rates on your tax bill. Everybody that gets their tax bill, they do their math, they double check to ensure that we have sent out an accurate tax bill. This will be the first year, tax bill 2025, handle in 2026, there will be zero assessment rates on it. So, we're going to be fielding phone calls and educating the public. We're trying to come up with some language that is easy to understand and also to help walk taxpayers through this new change because not only is there going to not be an assessed value on your tax bill, there is now going to be, and yeah, two different assessment rates for schools and non-schools. So, you're going to get a tax bill that you've never seen before in your entire time you've owned property. So, we are trying to be proactive and come up with some way to easily explain this very complicated procedure.
So, Assistant Ramon, again, you already said that there's going to be a lot of fielding of questions. For communities like Los Angeles County, Trinidad, where we have quite a lot of senior citizens and fixed incomes.
Yes.
They're going to be wondering what happened because, you know, usually you have your task, your task, tax assessment.
And your tax bill that you compare to.
Correct. And so, it's going to be quite busy. So, I think we prepare for that. What legislation prompted that? What?
I'll have to get the bill number for you, and I'll send that out in an email. I'm not sure if it was a treasurer-sponsored bill or if it came from the actual legislatures themselves. But I will let you know. We had our Tyler Users Group two weeks ago, and this was discussed heavily and in length because we, it's, we are all a little shocked. We're all a little taken back. Actually, the Assessors Association, we had our attorney delve into it, and the treasurers did too, because the treasurer just got back from their treasures conference. The language says shall not. Put it as it is.
It's a disservice to.
It's a disservice to our taxpayers.
How to last.
Yes, it is. Yes, it is.
Do you think it's a transparency? Yes. With a light there.
It was going to be as transparent as swamp mud.
Well, you know, my concern as well, County Commissioners, the, the idea here is that this is how county governments operate.
Yes.
We operate on the people's money. So, we have to be accountable, transparent, and of course, have the ability to answer any and all questions when it comes to their money.
Correct.
As good stewards of that. So, I guess we prepare for, I, and thank you. I would like us to have a copy of that piece of legislation, the shawl.
I will get that.
Those are pretty strong words.
Those are very strong words. So, we're preparing for that, trying to be ahead of the game, be proactive. We're hoping great minds can come up with something that is easily transferred on to the public and is understandable by the public. Once we get that, hopefully I will, I will share that with you. And just on a side note, we do have one taxpayer who is taking the County Board of Equalization to the Board of Assessment Appeals. That hearing has been scheduled for February. I am in my process now of doing my due diligence and getting an appraisal done. Whether we stipulate or we go on to the VAA, it's the gentleman, the taxpayer who has property up in Simero Ranches by North Lake and Monument Lake. So, we, Ms. Nelson will keep you guys informed, and I will, we will be collaborating and talking as a group storm. But I did want to let you know, we did have one that is taking us on. So, I consider that great odds considering a revaluer. And that is all I have at this time.
Well, thank you so much.
You're very welcome. I'm always a welcome to share the good news.
But that's great information for our constituents.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Assistant Ramon. Anyone else? Let me call on Clerk and Recorder's Office. Treasurer. Sheriff's Office. District Attorney. Coroner. Here in that, I'm going to move down to public comment. Any savings for the public services at that?
No, thank you.
Thank you, sir. And let me ask anyone that may be online, if you wish to address the Board of County Commissioners at this time, simply raise your hand and meet yourself, and you will have three minutes. Here in that, we don't have any items on the finished business. We're going to go to Section 9, new business, consideration of 25 COC 005 ATM RFQ. Mr. Don Camp.
Commissioners, we solicited responses to ATM RFQ. The ATM, at one time, there was one up near the clerk's office. We had a vendor contact us and had a desire, and that was pulled out, had a desire to bring one back or perhaps to put it on the first floor. The location that we're kind of contemplating is next to the venue machine, and we had one response that came from GB ATM. There were some questions and requests in our RFQ on compensation proposal. As an example, this company says that when they had their ATM up at clerk's office, I think they said they had, on average, 10 transactions a month, which wasn't enough to really warrant having the ATM. There are only one and two. There wouldn't be any kind of compensation proposal out of something like that because they were, their income wasn't enough to actually have a proposal that the county would take, frankly, a cut of that, of their income. And so, I think his desire is, or this company's desire is to put the ATM in place and then wait and see. And then we can address it if the transactions are such that, in other words, it's 20 to 40 of these that have been submitted, then we take a look at perhaps compensating the county for having that in our building and also using our electricity. And then, secondly, on the proof of insurance, I mean, doesn't, the company does not carry insurance and doesn't carry any insurance on any of their ATMs they have scattered throughout, not only Trinidad, but other areas in the southern part of the state. And I bring it to the board's attention. I don't know if they, if there's a reason to not approve this or to go ahead and approve it.
I think, thank you, Mr. Don Camp. I will look this way. And I don't know if there's any, legally, I mean, I know this is a sort of store, a state-owned store community that would be really great. And the reason it was moved from the clerk is because lack of activity. I know this would be almost asking a legal question, but the council, do you see any?
Not with the proposal itself. If this isn't the full agreement when we're moving forward with the proposal. Is he going to give us a contract?
No.
Yes. So, that, so for this piece of it, I can.
Okay, very good. Very good. And, and once again, the, when this piece of equipment is going to be bolted to the, to the ground, Mr. Don Camp, and I know we have the, I mean, the looking floor that we have on the first floor, and I just want to be certain that there is enough damage just to be marble, to already that kind of thing. And in the event that the machine does not yield the transactions, we probably would, would end up removing it after another one year.
Commissioner, I would say we need to look at the terms of the contract.
Yes.
That's what we proposed as a one-year term. And also, as far as bolting to the floor, my guess is, purely a guess, the reason they bolt ATMs to the floor of the locations is because the ATMs are sitting out there without any, I want to say super good board in.
Right.
Seeing the ATM. This will be a security. So, I'm going to suggest to, if the board approves the contract, to this vendor, to perhaps, if they want to secure, to, to have it on a piece of metal plating that isn't not, that is not attached to our floor. I can't imagine someone coming in and trying to steal an ATM with their security card, 50 feet away from them. I, you know, I'm going to make it clear that we do not want that ATM, in my opinion, attached to the floor because it is made of marble, as you alluded to, and there are the damage that, in my opinion. If they can figure out another way to say.
Maybe alternative would be to attach it to the wall. If they worked out it to them, you know, maybe that would be something they would entertain.
Any other comments, Commissioners?
Aye.
Okay. No other questions, and thank you. At this time, I think it would be, from my perspective, let's see what a contract, what kind of information is returned back to us. Commissioners, it's on the floor for a motion. I do not approve that.
I will move to approve the consideration of 25 FC 005 ATM RFQ. Second motion.
Commissioner Has.
Yes.
Commissioner Sir.
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez.
Yes. Might be consideration of 25 C 006 Corrus sliding glass doors. Mr. Don Camp.
Commissioners, we solicited bids to install sliding glass doors, the accordion-style doors in our, off of Lake Street for entrance into the courthouse. And we had one option, the option, the basic bid would be for replace one of those doors with what is called a Durafit, accordion door sliding glass doors. And then, as an option, we also bid for the same type of door, Durafit, for the doors going into the courtyard that walk through the door there. And then, as an alternate. And then as an alternate, we requested bids be sent back to us for a Durashield, sliding glass doors, accordion style doors. And the Durashields are of a heavier frame and the window glass themselves would be a glass such that it's a little bit more bullet resistant than the Durafit. CODA Construction did submit a bid for the base bid, the option and the alternate, which is the Durashield. And Trinidad Construction did, Construction Group did a base bid for the Durafit, option one. And on their alternate, they said that no bid was submitted because the Durashield would not fit our door openings, according to the representative that they stopped, that they talked with from Stanley. I got a response finally from Stanley Door Company this morning at eight forty-one. And their rep, our rep, Nick of Staid with the Legion, had said that in order to put a Dura Shield, which is the bulletproof glass, we would need to have a ninety-inch opening. Our opening right now is seventy-four. So the only way to get a Dura Shield to fit would be to cut into.
The wall.
The rock, the marble, everything else that is outside of our door frame. And it's up to the board, my sense is we're probably talking about to damage the integrity or mess with the integrity of those old doors that have been there since nineteen and twelve or whenever this old courthouse was made. So that being said, if we compare the base bids, CODA Construction has a base bid of one hundred and seventy-eight thousand, three hundred dollars. Trinidad Construction with a base bid of one hundred and forty-two thousand dollars. One hundred and forty-two thousand, seventy-seven dollars, sixty cents. Option one from CODA is fifty-nine thousand, four hundred and thirty-three dollars, thirty-four cents. Option one from Trinidad Construction, fifty-four thousand, two hundred and six dollars, twenty-five cents. And then, as we kind of just discussed, the alternate, in my opinion, we don't consider because we don't want to widen the existing door frame by knocking into the existing rock and or marble. So it's my recommendation that the board award this bid to Trinidad Construction Group, the base bid of one hundred and forty-two thousand, seventy-seven dollars, sixty cents. That would be for the six doors off of Maple Street. And then also option one, fifty-four thousand, two hundred and six dollars, twenty-five cents. That would be for the door coming into courtyard.
That includes both.
Both doors, interior and exterior.
Correct. And Mr. Dorikamp, what is the makeup, what, who is the manufacturer of this, of these doors?
Stanley.
Stanley.
Yeah, the Legion purchased Stanley, I think, two years ago while we were in the middle of the first bid and we did all these doors on them. And now Legion is building them.
What is there, there, and I know we have naked, but I want to make sure that for the record, what is the warranties that we have within Stanley's, both in the manufacturing and then, of course, now we're looking at craftsmanship of the installers, which is going to be at the very end of the day, what's going to suffice the whole thing. So that's question one. And then, of course, this includes any and all electrical that may be needed to operate those automatic openers, correct?
It's Cherokee project, yes.
Okay.
Construction for transparency, for public, construction to begin when and when is this sunset?
Uh, let me see what I had on this big issue. Do you know what we committed to memory? June thirty, twenty twenty-six to meet the deadline. And as soon as the contract is signed, then that's it. We use our design contract, the signed agreement as our notice to proceed. So from that point on, it's up to the contractor to either work before June thirty, twenty twenty-six.
And we know we're going to have interruptions with accident entry here in the front. Then are we going to move it around to the courtyard?
No, what our, what the bid documents state is that the public is able to access, access the courthouse at all times. So the contractor, I don't know how they're going to put the doors in place, but I know what I would do.
The, the doors on the north side, we'd have to, if we use those, we'd have to use security over there, probably.
Yeah, off of First Street, no, that's not an option. And using them off the chest is also not an option.
Is there, and on that question, I mean, would the contract be willing to work weekends? Or even after hours, I don't know, that would even alleviate some of what Commissioner asked this question?
We've not had that discussion, Commissioner. I don't know, even up to the contractor to buy it by the bid documents. But the bid documents say that ADA folks who need ADA access, that stays in place at all times. And then the general public has access into the courthouse at all times.
Sorry. And do you have any concerns?
No.
And I'm looking at financial rate authority.
Um, we'll have, we'll have to begin this in January of twenty twenty-six. Because we reconstructed capital expenditure because of the red wire. So as I said, I'm saying, as far as expenditures and everything, can't happen until twenty twenty-six.
Very good. So I, I don't want to get too deep into the weeds, but how could, one, you know, they, I mean, I looked at CODA Construction providing figures for alternate one. I mean, was that kind of a miscommunication?
Commissioners, I can't speak for them. I can only say, my suspicion is, they probably didn't measure our existing doors, they'll be blocked, I don't know. I don't know why they submitted a bid unless, and they didn't ask, talk to me about this, unless they just assumed that they could go ahead and cut into the old, the existing rock. But my suspicion is they probably didn't come down with any of those actions.
All right. Well, we have, we have the numbers to prove the project. So it is a recommendation to proceed with approving this for Trinidad Construction Group.
That's my recommendation, yes, sir.
Commissioners, any other questions on this? I, hearing that, I will entertain a motion.
Move to approve twenty-five C zero zero six courthouse sliding glass doors. The ordered Trinidad Construction Group with a base bid of one hundred and forty-two thousand, seventy-seven dollars and sixty cents. And option one being fifty-four thousand, two hundred and six dollars and a quarter.
I'll second it. Commissioner Sarah?
Yes.
Commissioner H?
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez?
Yes. And just for the record as well, the, the color of those doors will match the existing windows.
The colors of the doors will match the existing doors' colors, as near as possible. Forest green, white, kind of, is.
Very good. Thank you, sir. Uh, night C, consideration of Adams Electric Change Request Proposal, one zero one one cloth wiring. Mr. Dorikamp.
Commissioners, the ongoing cloth wiring removal replaced project Adams. America is the company that's been doing the actual work. And this is another change request proposal for third floor vault. District Court offices, open red wire between light fixtures. Install conduit box, replace the wire, sensor storage room, clerk's office. One of the tracks that, instead of going through the floor from the junction box underneath and then back up to a certain desk, we approved a track to be laid between the junction box over the desks and between desks. And apparently there was a pinch in one of them that caused computers to lose power. Center, they replaced that. District Court offices relocated the thermostat and the conduit wire. Judge's office, open wire ran between light fixtures. And assessors' office replaced the outdated switch. It just continues.
I'm looking at this picture in the bottom right corner and I see the pigtails there with the spider web of wires and kind of reminds me of what goes on out at the third grounds during third time.
Yes.
You've got us bad. Must have a pretty good bricker on that side of the building.
I'll just repeat myself. I have some conversation, I'm not sure why so much wasn't addressed in the past, but.
I, I don't know that Commissioner brings up a pretty good point. I think that's a work of art. But to do, to do that, actually, to do what, who wants this project completely done, it gives recommendations to places such as this one because although the project is being approved, we tend to take it back to the where we came from, so. Anyhow, Mr. Dorikamp, what is the amount of change order request?
Excuse me?
Commissioner, how many?
Three thousand, sixty-two dollars.
Thank you, sir. Commissioners, any other questions on that?
Nothing.
Hearing that, I will entertain a motion.
I will move to approve the Adams Electric Change Order Request, the code of ten eleven, cloth wiring for three thousand, sixty-two dollars. Second motion.
Commissioner S?
Yes.
Commissioner Sarah?
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez?
Yes. Uh, the next item, night E, consideration of Adams Electric Change Request Proposal, one zero one two cloth wiring. Mr. Dorikamp.
Commissioners, similar to the change request proposal that the board just approved, this is for installing new surface mount conduit in place of the old conduit that was kinked. Old cloth and jagged wire was stuck in existing conduit replacement boxes for receptacles that were too small. Some second floor county clerk's office. For an amount of five thousand, four hundred forty, five thousand, four hundred forty-six dollars. I ask the board to approve this motion.
Thank you, sir. Commissioners, any questions? Mr. Dorikamp. And we'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve the Adams Electric Change Request Proposal, ten twelve, cloth wiring for five thousand, four hundred forty-six dollars.
I'll second it. Commissioner Sarah?
Yes.
Commissioner H?
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez?
Yes. Night E, consideration of enlarged South Side Ditch Company proxy. Mr. Dorikamp.
Free Commissioners is, in our South Side Ditch Company's proxy for, we are members of South Side Ditch Company. We be in Los Angeles County here since we have some water rights on the South Side Ditch. And I can't remember where our tributary is off of that ditch. And I ask the board to assign someone to be the proxy.
So right now we have Commissioner Tony H that has been attending most of the meetings.
And I won't be able to attend this. And this would be a good fit. I believe that Commissioner Sarah would entertain beating the proxy out of him, make that motion. What do you say, sir?
Okay. Well, then I will second that motion, sir.
Commissioner Lopez?
Yes.
Commissioner H?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioner Sarah. That basket will fill up quick. Because I'm going to give you a couple more here soon. Uh, consideration of amended public trustee report for the third quarter. Mr. Dorikamp.
Commissioner, there was an error in the reading of some of the number, of a number within the past Los Angeles County Public Trustee reported the board approved at your prior meeting. Four hundred thousand was lacking a zero that our finance director caught. So we brought that back to the board with the proper zero and the proper locations. So it's actually four hundred thousand, not forty thousand with the common number spot.
You know, so when Jasmine would think that a zero is not that important. Commissioners, any questions? I will entertain a motion.
I will, I will move to approve the amended public trustee report for third quarter. Second motion.
Commissioner H?
Yes.
Commissioner Sarah?
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez?
Yes. Night G, consideration of red alert license application for the Royal Tower LLC. Counsel, you reviewed the application?
I reviewed it, I believe. Please.
Thank you. So, very question after us, I was reading this, this application. We have a response from the local sheriff's office. But it hasn't reached to the point that I think it creates, uh, I guess, a big issue. I know we have just a couple of cases that are listed in here that are happening to pass, responsive by the sheriff's department. Commissioners, any questions on this? I think this has been resolved. And the council says it's not complete application. That gives me a piece.
It's complete and we, we don't have that knowledge other than what we read here. And I'd make, I'd move to approve it to the application for Royal Tower LLC.
I'll second it. Commissioner Sarah?
Yes.
Commissioner H?
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez?
Yes. Thank you. Uh, consideration of Burlington Northern Santa Fe Agreement. Mr. Dorikamp.
Commissioner, four three consideration is Burlington Northern Santa Fe Agreement for road crossing on Canal eighteen point three. It's a road that you can take the Walmart action to head towards Starkville and you make a right and go through Breeville towards the reservoir. So, set of tracks right there. Our road bridge supervisor requested Burlington Northern take a look at the crossing sometime back. Changing it from the tide structure to a complete structure, like I'm sure some of you have driven across and they changed those out. As far as that, then Burlington Northern sent us an agreement. We worked on the original agreement that they sent to have a lot of modifications down. Those modifications are reflected in this amended agreement. But my opinion is that if the board does consider adopting this agreement, that the board adopted with the exclusion of executive seat. In my opinion, executive seat could, could, and maybe this is what, maybe it needs to be tabled and discussed in executive and to come back out and take an action on. In my opinion, it may hold the county to some liability issues and some work that frankly I don't think is conducive with our operation. But, and I told the representative from Burlington Northern when we were discussing this agreement, that I review my recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Dorikamp. Thank you for.
He would not remove it out of the agreement that he forwarded to us.
Well, if he's going to be a standard practice, that the railroad is going to start doing with counties, then they need to provide the funding aid. And if somehow the county now becomes the contractor to make that whole, this is not the expertise of accounting. Who would end up having to hire a consultant? And probably a specialized contractor? This is right away, the belongs to the federal government. So for that, I read your, I read that document and thank you for doing all the due diligence and providing the feedback to us. It is great. I, I agree with, with your comment that I believe this needs to be table for the moment and carry on the conversation in executive. Unless, otherwise, by my fellow commissioners, I will entertain a motion.
I will move to table night H, consideration of the M F agreement. Second motion.
Commissioner H?
Yes.
Commissioner Sarah?
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez?
Yes. Thank you. Financial matters, consideration of payroll and bills for first half of October two thousand twenty-five. How many is the record, Corey?
Payable as of October fifteenth, twenty twenty-five is two hundred and sixty-eight thousand, eight twenty-one and fifty-six cents. Do you have any questions on this?
Questions, no questions?
No.
Voice has been on October fifteenth, six hundred and fifty-six thousand, nine. And voice is paid on October fifteenth, six hundred and fifty-six thousand, nine twenty-eight and seventy-one cents within this packet. Let's see, we've paid for, um, three hundred and eighteen thousand with red wire. Um, the sling tile and administration, including those twelve thousand ninety dollars. And then the final payment for the insurance claim, this was forty-five thousand, one hundred and sixty dollars. We have one more invoice. I did a special packet for the, for the elections office for postage for one thousand dollars. And that was on October sixteen. Did I miss anything? Do you have questions or accounts payable?
Hearing no questions, I will entertain a motion.
Move to approve payroll and bills for the first half of October twenty twenty-five.
I'll second it.
Commissioner Surratt?
Yes.
Commissioner Hask?
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez?
Yes. Information on the financial report for September two thousand twenty-five.
Let's see, financials, um, as of September thirty, twenty twenty-five. General Fund, we have surplus of six hundred and twenty-one thousand. Road Bridge has a surplus of four hundred and forty-six thousand. Airport has a deficit of eighty-eight thousand. I belong in that budget this year. Um, contingent has a surplus of sixty thousand. Capital expenditure has a surplus of two hundred and twenty-one thousand. Um, let's see, construct water lottery has a surplus of thirty-eight thousand. Build has a deficit of eighty-six. I have transferred the funds to Road Bridge, so that has a deficit. Um, allocate enough has a surplus of one thousand, one eighty-three, two. And then General Fund has a deficit of eighty-six thousand, and I will transfer the money, the funds, probably one ever. So I can see what we can understand, can understand.
Thank you. And this is really the story of one point one thus far, positive and balance?
Yes.
One point one in the options.
We're watching.
Yes.
On that. Yeah, I don't know if Mr. Burakat told you that the severance tax was extremely reduced this year. We received thirteen thousand. That's, I think, last year, we received maybe, maybe about four hundred thousand, maybe? Yeah, so our severance tax was, was extremely low this year, so was the Middle East. So where the state can give us the full funding.
And that's going to be kind of the, as we go forward, anything that the state can come back, they will, and, and pass on that to counties.
So it's not going to be for Road Bridge, but just to say that.
Very good. I do have, I think I'm going to probably take the time to go, uh, some of the questions that I have here, highlight it, maybe, uh, one on one later on, because, you know, one of, one of the, one of the points, as I look at all the fund balances, the balance sheets that you put together by, by departments.
Yes.
I see some line items that are, for instance, let me go to, uh.
Revenue expense. What do you have?
I'm looking at the, uh.
What page is that?
I'm on page, on the page here. Uh, General Fund balance for county commissioners. And the contractual services, obviously, it's only a fifty-five hundred dollar line item. Uh, and that is, the contractual services are over a hundred and forty-eight percent.
That is the, the F O P attorney for, uh, to remember how we, we agreed and we had a budget for that.
Very good.
So the attorney for the sheriff's department, that they're doing their union negotiation.
Okay.
That's, that's why that is actually an increase for that.
I, I think, you know, some of the, I, as you go through the whole thing, I mean, there is a, pretty good, good diligence. There is one, for instance, and I, I believe this is under county sheriff. Uh, we have insurance claim expenditure nine hundred and nineteen, nineteen percent, almost a thousand percent. But when the appropriation was only three thousand dollars, and there's an expenditure of twenty-seven thousand dollars, I mean, obviously, that's going to rise to that level.
Right, because, because, so we do, when you put the, the funds in the budget for insurance thing, I'm not sure, that's just to cover that?
Sure.
Because the revenue actually comes in from the claim, and our deductible is usually, I think, seven fifty or fifteen hundred. And I think this one was split in half.
Yeah.
Because then part of the claim was, um, you saw where, um, we actually picked the final one.
Yes.
Yeah, so, so part of the claim was at the fairgrounds, and part of it was actually the sheriff's department. So they did split the deductible.
Yes, and I actually see how the, the money is.
So the revenue did come in, just to tell you on the revenue side for that one there. So that was a little hard to budget for, for the claim, but the revenue did come in on that side.
And this may be, uh, under the oil and gas inspection, uh, one of the expenditures for contractual services. Uh, obviously, the appropriation, uh, the budgeted amount, a thousand dollars, the expenditure, you know.
So that was to Schuma Coda, is that what it is? Schuma, the one for Maverick? So they're doing the inspection for that, and the revenue did come in.
Okay, very good.
Uh, twenty twenty-four?
Very good.
And Schuma hasn't been there until twenty twenty-five.
Very good.
So that's where that happened.
Yeah, that's, uh, those were some of the items I highlighted, but thank you, uh, Finance Director, probably, yeah, great job, sorry. Commissioners, no other questions? Since that was for information only, we're going back, we're going to go now to section eleven, executive session. CRS twenty-four six four two four B, confirmed with the county attorney of the purpose of receiving legal advice on specific legal questions. Item A is land use publication, B Burlington Northern Santa Fe, and C contracts. Uh, commissioners, at this time, I'm going to entertain a motion to suspend the regular board, county commissioners, and enter into executive session with small reasons. So, second motion.
Commissioner Hask?
Yes.
Commissioner Surratt?
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez?
Yes.
Thank you.